So we'll call a meeting to order. We do not have anyone to take minutes tonight, it looks like. I guess Allison was unsuccessful.
Right, that's right.
So...
So the clerk?
Is Tara okay?
So the clerk.
Um, I have had some communication with her. The last time I heard she was able to get up and make her own coffee. But I haven't spoken to her for a while, so I'm not sure.
So she was really not doing well. She on bedrest?
Uh, yeah, she has.
But everything's okay?
Well, we're hoping. So we'll wait and see. She's in co-credit.
Oh, so she's close?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So we're all pulling for her.
Yeah, definitely.
Allison was going to come take the minutes and has actually a ton of commitments this week to take other minutes as well. So I told her, "Don't worry about it." She did the red for us last Wednesday. So we did contact Bruce, and Bruce was very kind to say that yes, he would be willing to do it.
In public.
Yes, in public. And you are in public right now too, so I'm sure you will be kind as well. So thank you for taking the minutes. If you need me help, there's an expert to my left who takes minutes occasionally as well. And he'd be happy to help you out, I'm sure. The other officer at the board. So, um, we have no members of the public here tonight, so we can whip right through that part until they come, I hope. Additions or corrections to the agenda? I did want to add the piece. I knew there was something that we didn't put on the agenda, and it was discussion about school board breakfast.
There you go.
So we're going to add that under new business.
Who wants to?
Gosh. We've got to figure it out.
I should say staff breakfast.
You didn't mention that.
And pay orders. And that, we'll have that conversation. I'll let you know what day it is. And then, I wanted to take the minutes out of the consent agenda, if that's okay. So we'll just eliminate the consent agenda, and we'll just approve the minutes under number 10. But we'll have a conversation about it, because I did want to change just a couple of things. So is there anything else to adjust the agenda? Steven, you had no adjustments to the agenda? Guess not. Um, correspondence? I have? No. No correspondence? Correspondence?
Yeah.
Steven, not for you either?
No.
Okay, thank you. Administrative reports. The principal's report was emailed to you. Several documents, I think, or at least one large one with a backup.
A lot of them, yeah.
There's the principal's report, and then there's the behavior referral data.
Yeah.
So we'll turn that, I hope everybody had it. Oh, and, oh, yeah, okay, that was later. Is that white paper later?
Mm-hmm, underneath Ask.
Yep, okay. So, I'll turn it over to you, Darin. Thank you for the referral report.
Every year.
Every year.
That's how we know how we're doing. I did make note of a few things that I wanted to share with you that becomes the basis for future planning, as well as for you to be aware of right now. And I'd like to start with the report number one. And so I'm just going to talk a little bit about each report, and then people will, but very, that's not actually each report, just a couple of reports, three of them. And then if you have questions, or want to make observations, or you would like to throw us.
Okay.
So, the first report on behavior referrals. The data is skewed, not because it's inaccurate, but this past year, 1213, there were 26 more boys at Leland and Gray than girls. So for all these lines that say, you know, seventh grade, 54% of boys, of students referred were boys, and 46% were girls, well, and then it's actually gets even a greater disparity as they get older. But the fact is that a not insignificant percentage of boys attend Leland and Gray at a higher rate than girls. And next year it's going to be even more. We're going to have 33 more boys than girls in our school. Another thing that skews the data, I met with my leadership team, which includes Melanie Zwillinski and David Colerick, to analyze the data together. Another thing that skews is that one or two teachers may be making many referrals, disproportionately so. And there's also one or two students who may be getting a lot of referrals too. So let's say there's a ninth grader who got 60 referrals this year. That's going to skew, and it's a boy, that's going to skew the data for their class. So, so just to let you know that while, so while we've collected this now for three years in a row, I start to wonder, how useful is this?
That's a good question.
If, you know, the numbers, what are they telling me? Not a lot in this case. And maybe we need to look at other aspects of this referral data. And there's a third factor that skews it, which is some students do not have the grade level status of their peers. So the whole class moved on to 10th grade, but a number of students still have ninth grade status because they didn't earn enough credits. So they're reflected in the ninth grade. However, come January, they might be in 10th grade, and so they still get a lot of behavior referrals, and so it might be going into the 10th grade, looking like. So it becomes a moving part that, and you all would have probably thought the student wasn't, I mean, you don't know who the student is, but on the outside it would look like a 10th grade student. And in age-wise, yes, but not in terms of grade level status. So then again, I look it up, and I look at these, you know, seventh and eighth. It's easy to put together quantitatively, but doesn't reveal a lot about it because of these differences. But, a couple of things that we do want to study that we haven't studied before is, for the students who get four to seven referrals, or eight, or more referrals, what's their trend, or what's their trajectory over their years at Leland and Gray? Do they get less referrals, more referrals? Do they drop out? Looking at those individual students, it's a very high-risk group, and how many times were they suspended? Was there any correlation to dropping out, or, or something else? And that is not something we've done before. We really relied on the quantitative information for the, for like, the big picture. And so we see the big picture, we get pretty much the same number of referrals, you know, it changes a little bit year to year of the percentage of each grade, but what's the story of these students, and are we helping them? One thing I wanted to let you know is that, sitting on our educational support system team is Jeremiah Burrow, our campus supervisor. So when he has four or five referrals from the same student, he brings up the student's name to that support team, which includes all the school counselors, the school social worker, and others, and the school nurse, so they can intervene at that level. So it's not like a kid racks up all these referrals and no one's paying attention to it. That's the place where that goes. I wanted to explain more about suspensions, because if you look on page three, you'll notice we have significantly, we've had significantly more suspensions this year than over the past two years, or more than double than two years ago. And, and if you look towards the trends, well, first of all, at the last line in the middle of the page, it says, "Variety of violations resulting in suspension." There are 19 different reasons why students got suspended. And in, and in general, I don't know why it says, oh, yeah, yep. So if you look in the trends, so you can see that more students got suspended for fighting because while we never use a term like zero tolerance, if students, you know, physically engage in a fight, they're suspended, usually in school. As you can see, there's a lot more in-school suspensions than out-of-school suspensions. But immediately, you did this, this is, this is what happens. Extreme disrespect usually involves with an adult in the building cursing someone out. You're not allowed to do that. You did that, it's, it's, students would argue that school has gotten stricter, and it has. We don't tolerate it anymore. The cutting class, that's often when a student will say, "I don't want to serve those detentions. Give me a half-day in school," because there's a, in the student handbook, it explains, certain number of detentions can result in this. I'm always amazed when the student says, "I have so much work to catch up on. Can you just give me an in-school?" And then I'll take care of two birds, see what the, get two birds with one stone. And then you see about response around bullying and harassment. But I want to tell you that the most consequences for bullying and harassment are not suspension. They're usually restorative justice. And oftentimes, it's suspension combined with restorative justice, because the bullying's not going to stop unless there's some kind of restorative component. Any, any questions?
Yes. Last line, tobacco, alcohol, and drugs. I see it's dropped to four. Does that mean that there's less use? Are they getting better at hiding it, or are we dealing with it otherwise? Meaning that it doesn't result in suspension?
A student who brings alcohol or drugs are always suspended. That's, that, for tobacco, several, there were four, there were four violations, and I don't know if it's, if it's written in here somewhere about that. I think there were five kids or something. Yeah, at the page, the top of page two, it explains that there's the number of incidents. So two of those six incidents must have been tobacco only, because that doesn't result, the first offense is not suspension. The question, are they getting better at hiding it, or they're not, or they're not bringing it, or they're not using it? Well, we're really glad to see the decrease. And there has been no decrease in supervision of the building. If anything, it's been increased. Maybe with the high number we had last year, they really don't bring it to school. I'd like to think that the use is down. We administered the Vermont Youth Risk Behavior Survey last January. We get the results, I believe, this fall. So hopefully, there will be a decline from two years ago. That would be great, because there was an uptick from the survey distributed from 2009 to 2011, substance use increased report by students.
I'd like to congratulate you on that.
Thank you.
That's a huge accomplishment. You mentioned earlier that some of the referrals have been coming from one teacher in particular. Does something, some kind of counseling happen with that teacher around that issue?
We do provide support for teachers, yes. And...
But that seems to skew it, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah. And if there's a particular student acting out in a particular class because of the poor relationship between that youth and adult, we certainly attempt restorative practices.
When you threw that out, it just interested me. Was there some follow-up to that? And there obviously is, so.
And, and not to point fingers, but the classic new teacher. I wrote a lot of referrals in my first year or two of teaching.
Okay.
So I wouldn't, I mean, it would have been me, the one.
So you'll give the help?
Yes, yes. Penny?
So, if you wanted to detect an improvement from year to year on a certain group, you'd have to, like, follow, like, the seventh graders from last year are now eighth graders. So if you wanted to see if, if there was an improvement in behavior and culture, because I assume this is all to change the culture, then you'd have to follow the groups, right, on through. And that would be some, I mean, I know it's not a perfect science, because you do have a lot of variables, like you said, but that would be a way you could see improvement in moving forward, that groups are improving as they come through. And it's like, okay, it's, it's coming through.
That's, that's a great thing to bring up, because for my first two, three years, well, the first two years here, it was ninth and 10th, they had the highest percentage. And now the, so the, so, and also the 11th grade had a dispo, had, this class had a much higher percentage of referrals. Never, it would usually be anywhere between, I don't know, around 30, 40% range, and it's really dropped down a lot. Yeah.
I could add to that. You're hitting upon the actual issue that we face in assessing the student progress or gauging progress, because the Kneecap Test is the same situation. We're comparing adequate yearly performance of different groups.
Yeah.
And we're not, we're not comparing the growth of a specific group of kids, nor the number of kids. Now, you know, the profile that is only for internal consideration, I say by administration of my counselors and so forth, is, is the profile of an individual student over time. And those are, we're able to report by class or grade to aggregate, because it doesn't identify an individual student to the public. But that, that is, a parallel, a problem with summarizing data and performance of students. I think another trend that probably you see in this is that it's pretty typical that as kids get older, it's generally the senior class that does not have the highest number of referrals. You know, there is, they learn how to, as you were suggesting, you know, that they learn how to cover, or they're a little more discreet, and so forth. But generally, they, that's also a sign that they're acculturating or learning the ropes of dealing with adulthood and responsibility, by the way. That is positive. So, and that's certainly a trend. It would be quite alarming if we saw something contradictory there. It would be certainly very concerning about a particular class.
The number, the number of students suspended, I mean, your number of suspensions went up considerably, but last 11, 12, with 52 students, now it's down to 39 in 1213. So the 39 students were suspended, average, 110 days total. So those students that were suspended were only, have suspended for three days each, basically, from every given hour.
No. Total suspensions is, the, out of the 1,500 or so incidents we've had, there were 110 times that someone was suspended. And so they may have been suspended one day, or three days, or five days.
Right, but then it says the number of students suspended, 39.
Right. So some of them may have been suspended eight days, and some may have been suspended one day. Okay. Sorry.
But I mean, but that number decreased, because it was 52 to your...
Total number of kids.
The number of kids acting out to the point of suspension went down, even though your number of suspensions went up. I mean, meaning that you're being stricter to the students acting out in some ways, or looking like that.
And reducing the number of students who do qualify for suspension, if you want to put it that way.
That's a culture change.
Well, that's, yeah, that's positive, I'd say.
Other questions or comments?
There's a lot of data here.
Yes, you could get back to this stuff. Don't, don't attempt to take it all in one sitting, and certainly, Darin and I welcome questions following up later on at other meetings. We'll keep this on file.
Yeah, me too. In the second report, the school climate survey, I am embarrassed to state that some of the percentages are wrong. I'd like to have opportunity to correct them and email them to you again, Steven, before they get posted, or if they've already been posted. Because the first one there, my school is preparing me well for my future, it's actually 70% of the students agreed. And what is, there were 71, so very close. And then down in the next section where it says safety and respect, feel safe at school, it's 68%. And then two below that, around restorative justice, it's 75%. And just below that, teasing and bullying are a big problem, 54. And then on the next page, where it says education, so the first percentage is actually 60%.
Where it was 51 before?
Yep. And then participate in co-creative activities, 75% have participated in other programs.
Rather than 58?
Yep.
75%.
Yep. So I apologize for that. I'm glad I found the mistakes. So, three pairs of i's are better than one, when we put that together. So I just want, the, the thing that I wanted to bring to your attention was, I, the substantial increase around teasing, bullying, and harassment are a big problem. When we talked about this as a leadership group, it was rightly pointed out that we had several assemblies throughout the school year highlighting bullying and harassment issues.
More than...
And it was talked about in advisories, and we had some posters up, and really drawing attention to protected categories and status. And, so, do we, is it a big problem, or has the awareness increased? But it's such a significant issue that I'm asking the campus supervisor this fall to start a small ad hoc committee, including some more staff and students, to do some research on this. First of all, to find out what happens at our elementary schools around bullying harassment prevention, find out what programs or interventions, or is it, is it a counseling program there, is it part of the class curriculum, or health curriculum? And for them to, and for the committee to truly understand the scope of the problem at Leland and Gray, and to see if we need to do more. So it's a double-edged sword about awareness. So, I am hoping that that would be a model for our campus supervisor to replicate again, identifying concern around school climate or student behavior, that he could then study with students and staff and make recommendations for improvements.
I have a question.
Yeah?
On the restorative justice, how is that shown to incoming seventh graders? Is it in an assembly-type thing? Or, I mean, that could, the awareness was so intense, the promotion of it when it first came out, that could have been, resulted in a 92%. You'd have to be, like, not even here to not know about it. And, you know, I don't know if maybe this could be something with incoming students who just aren't, you know, paying enough about it.
I mean, a nice video, too, to show how the process works, which we used for our training last year. We have a training every fall, and so that will happen again. But I think it's a good idea that after the training, there perhaps be some students, speakers at an assembly to bring about the awareness. So with the training, goes up a lot of posters, and the student announcements, and, you know, generally we have somewhere around 20 students who come and get trained. So, we can do better. Other questions about the climate survey?
I noticed, now I lost the data here. I noticed there's about a 10% decline in participation in AP. We've added all those courses, and we've lost 10%. Is there an explanation for that? A reason, a theory?
Mm-hmm. So, for example, advanced biology takes two semesters, and we were, because of scheduling needs, the teacher was not available to do both semesters. So we ran advanced biology, which is just one semester instead. So that was part of the reason for the decline of numbers. So some students who wanted to take AP Bio instead took advanced Bio. But it, both are represented here, so it's probably not the best example.
I think we should look into it, go back to the board.
Yeah.
Because it did, it, I actually, it jumped out at me as well.
There are a number of possibilities, I think.
Well, yeah, I mean, there could be a number of reasons.
Well, I mean, part of it is, we have had a decline in enrollment.
That's what I was thinking, too. We got to figure out how.
That's the first thing I thought of, and I was going to actually follow up, as Joe did, asking if we're, we're seeing a reflection of our actual decline in enrollment here with the decline in advanced placement. But I, or advanced courses. But it would, it would be nice to know why. It really did stand out to me as well.
I can't say that the, that in 2011, 12, it was the first time we offered AP Social Studies. So that included juniors and seniors. We never offered it before, so it grabbed from two classes. This year, it really only grabbed from one class, primarily juniors, because if the seniors wanted it before, they would have taken it the previous year.
Sure.
So I think that already is a big chunk.
And 10% would be by how many students?
It's on the next, on the next chart, where it lists, like, it has AP Social Studies 14, 11, 12, and five in 1213.
There's a scheduling conflict there, though.
But as far as where those numbers came, where the drop came, you can see which courses changed year to year. Or there's Chinese and Spanish that had seven students, and there's zero in the 1213 year.
None took APR. Is that a traditional, a lot of students?
Usually there's only about one a year.
Oh, okay.
One, maybe two.
It's a studio or kind of program, yeah.
The calculus game, same.
And since we're talking about this page, paying particular attention to underrepresented groups, and I will be, this was something we discussed in great length in the leadership team, about looking at the trajectory of our students who have a learning plan, specifically referring to a special education or IEP plan, I'm sorry, not IEP, a 504 plan, rather than, say, a safety plan or health plan, behavior plan, as well as students eligible for free and reduced meals, looking at the specific students. What courses did they choose to take if not these? And study this much more closely, and to be able to identify what were the, sort of the gateway times, if they hadn't, if they, if they chose one course over another course, and that led them this way. Or when they started ninth grade, they were in a particular program that kept them from there. So it's a combination of voluntary, the student's choice, and involuntary, they were recommended for, or their IEP team decided it was going to be this way. And so we really need to look closely at individual students to look at the trends. And I was so struck by this, and Steven and I discussed this, that I'm going to share it with the elementary school principals next week, to talk about how does that happen at the elementary school? That students are channeled in certain directions, so perhaps by the time they get here in seventh grade, perhaps they no longer even have an achievement orientation that they would aspire to these courses. So we have to go back earlier. So right now, we're just seeing the end product, and it's not changing. For three years, it's really not changing, except for, you know, you have three kids in a class, and they, and wow, two of them have, are eligible for free and reduced meals one year. That, that's, but the trend is that they're way underrepresented. And we have between 40 and 50% of our student population eligible for free or reduced meals. I think it's about 44%, depending on certain accounting. And so that, that really should be the percentage overall. So it'll take some time. It'll take first semester for us to really look closely at.
Just get the question again, just to get Joe's question in perspective. 10% means what, Joe? How many students? Or how many student courses are we talking about when we talk about 10%? Fewer taking AP. Admit what you said, you've answered your question.
Yeah, well, the number, you know, it went from 35% participate in AP courses, down to 26%. You're, you know, and that would be, you know, you're not even eligible to participate in AP probably till your sophomore year, or your junior. You're, you know, and that would be, you know, you're not even eligible to participate in AP probably till your sophomore year or your junior year. So, you know, how many students and does it reflect the freshman who said no and, you know? There are data, you know, there are questions there. It was just, you know, is there a scheduling problem? Is there a, you know?
Yeah, no, the question is very valid. I'm just trying to put a perspective on what.
I don't think it's that many kids.
Because ten percent out of.
I do wanna say that this is self-reporting. About a third of our students participate, about thirty-eight percent of our students participate in the school climate survey. Compared to the actual numbers of kids enrolled. So, the numbers are a little different.
Right. So, you could actually check by looking at the data from survey three here of how many.
It's not just students on students' courses too, so it's kinda complicated.
Twelve.
Twelve less.
Twelve less.
Twelve less, okay, thank you.
When you add up all these together.
With positive and negative yet, because there's some gains, there are some gains and some losses, but twelve student difference.
Okay, so twelve kids less.
It's a lot.
It's when you got small numbers, it's a lot.
A lot of it was in AP social studies where it went from fourteen to five.
Yeah, that's nine right there.
Between the two, that's nine, you know?
It's nine from right there, three quarters of the difference.
Changes by one or two or three, but that was the one where there's a giant.
AP Chinese and French, three, two.
Yeah, those went, no, it's probably because the kids weren't available or prepared, right? But we would look for that to change next year hopefully.
Yeah.
More enrollment in foreign language at the lower level. And that's what we expected, so.
Yep. Takes time.
On a positive note, I'd like to say that the AP history class, this past year, my daughter took it. She has developed a lifelong interest in US history. It's been a wonderful experience for her and she has just been soaking up books about US history and she's been quite a scholar already.
Wow.
And I attribute it all to that class.
That's a good sharing.
It's usually very interesting stuff, wanting to present it.
By someone other than your parent.
Everything's more interesting.
Sorry, that was gonna be all of the comments I was gonna make. If there are other questions about the reports?
So, as you reviewed it, does anybody, anything else pop out at you, you wanna ask questions about our comment? It's a lot. I tend to keep this tucked in the front of my folder here that I bring every night.
Keep looking at it, find more stuff.
There's a lot on here, go ahead.
On the, the last page, page seven, not last page, page seven. Enrollment by town.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna.
What does that mean? What does that indicate or does it indicate anything? Is it anything? I just couldn't quite figure out.
So, we have, how many students? Forty-three, wait a minute. Total, sixty students have an EST plan. So, that is a regular education academic or behavior plan. And of those sixty students, what towns are they from? That's what, so that's what those percentages are. So, we have a, the largest percentage of our students come from, from Townsend. And, sorry, not Townsend, from, from, from Newfane or Newbrook. And so, it's not surprising that it's as high as it is.
You have to add Williamsville into Newfane because Williamsville isn't.
Okay.
So, that should be separate.
Okay.
So, is there a?
Is this from, yeah, what's the, what's the question that this is ask answering?
Yeah, or is that yet to be developed?
I don't, I don't think it yields pertinent information.
I was just curious.
I mean, it's possible for a student to have a, a learning disability. Where in one town that qualifies a student for special education based on the decision of the team. Compared to another town where the student is not qualified because of the decision of the team. So.
Well, this is EST, this is EST, so. It's a seg, it's a subsegment of our student population for which we have plans that are concerned. But, yeah, I would suggest that, you know, trying to figure out where they're from and trying to gain something from that is probably. Answering a question we don't have an answer for and so, and asking it is not probably very relevant. Anyway, it is, point should be noted, the, the reason this comes out is when in Williamsville, I think we got a different post, they got a different zip code. So, they go by, yeah, but they get segregated electronically by the.
Well, then self-managed also.
Oh, is it they got a different, different zip? Okay, I don't have an explanation, yep.
So, some data is more informative than.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe we agree to delete that one next time.
Become a use for it sometime, you know, as you see trends or something.
Well, one thing that people are sometimes interested in at this, at this level of middle school, high school is where the schools of origin are and what the preparation is there. And of course, that's, that's informative to me in my capacity to coordinate the curriculum and make sure it's implemented. And that we, we're applying our resources and professional learning in the areas that are most needy and in the towns that are, you know, needed most. But this isn't, this isn't, that's a different set of data than this particular table, so. But I'm just pointing out, there are times when people are curious. Well, you know, kids better prepare if they come from towns and then if they come from Jamaica or whatever. And of course, we have such small numbers, it's hard to jump to any conclusions about that based on one or two classes.
On the top of page six, about middle and high school students who participated in athletics. And a music or a theater program during the same season, we were very curious about this information. And we had never generated it before, so I, I just wanted to share that with you.
It shows our kids are busy.
Constructively.
Good thing we have more energy.
It's impressive to have that larger percentage than, it's impressive to have a ten percent. With kids willing to be in all those, all those things and academics.
That's partially a cultural aspect of Leland and Gray. If we went to a bigger school, it'd be more difficult to participate in all those different things.
Do we have any data on students who don't participate in any culture? Who don't do drama, don't do sports, don't do that?
On the school climate survey, there's about twenty percent, twenty-five percent of students who don't do anything. And I can look at them as a group and see what they say about the rest of the school. Do they think the rules are fair? What do they think of the principal? What, do, do they, are they respected by their teachers, by their peers? Do they feel safe at school and coming to, so I can look at them as a subcategory. I don't have their names.
That'd be nice to see that number go down, you know, the twenty percent who don't participate, that would be an indicator.
I suspect that quite a few of them have jobs.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, which would be indicated if they were mostly in the higher grades.
Yeah.
Always.
And qualitatively, Susan Guttermore and Megan Altshuler know who the kids are who don't participate in anything and they're on their backs. You designed the program, tell us what you wanna do.
Right.
Come to this, I'm begging you.
Yeah, that goes back to the HAYE program. That was the approach there. That the coordinator sat and ate lunch with kids and hung out with them and figured out what it is they're, which is continually an interesting program.
Yeah, that's, that's the beauty of small school too. Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, thank you so much, Doreen. This is great. I really appreciate all this data.
You're welcome. And I thank all of the individuals who helped pull this together, so it's great.
And we echo that as well. Thank them for us. Okay, anything else from you?
So, the only thing I would say is that, I believe is at the June meeting that I reported on the math intervention, in May and June. I did some research about it and now that the grades have closed. Of the thirty or so students who participated in the math intervention, seventy-five percent of them passed their math course that year.
Great, very good.
Pretty good, could be better, but these were kids who were at great risk.
They must have felt good if they did it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, thank you.
There's a paper coming around.
I got a paper coming around. This is regarding AYP. The adequate yearly progress, what AYP stands for. Do you need one for the camera there? Frank, you wanna pass it on to the cameraman there? The, AYP means adequate yearly progress. And this is established by No Child Left Behind. The goal of which is by two thousand fourteen to reach a hundred percent of the students meeting the standard performance at grade level. For both language arts, reading specifically, and math. So, at the top chart is the last year's report at this time. The bottom chart with the thin lines is the present, most recent data. There's very good news for Leland and Gray, the fact that reading is now the group met standard. Now, keep in mind, you know, the caveat is that this group is a different group than the group tested last year. But it is encouraging. And, and, and once again, the performance in math, at least the percentage of kids who performed adequately at meeting the standard, was insufficient. Now, the, keep in mind, the basis for this is, once again, the goal that wherever, from wherever we started back when this law was first in effect. To today is a, a graph, a stepped graph going to perfection. So, I don't know, let me get a close up of the camera, but just, you can just see what happens visually. Here's reading, here's math. Now, you have these lines and they're benched. They're, they're level here to plateau, then they go up three years. That's up to two thousand eleven. Then from two thousand eleven, they go at another plateau to two thousand thirteen. Then two thousand fourteen, it's vile halle. We have reached perfection. Every single child has met the standard grade level in math and language arts. Now, there are those of us who have been trying very hard to achieve this, but recognize or at least suspect that reaching perfection is not going to be attainable. So, we expect that this year, thirty-one schools in Vermont made adequate yearly progress in both math and language arts. Over three hundred did not. We expect that, so what's that, about a ninety percent group that didn't? It's going to rise to ninety-nine to a hundred percent in the year two thousand fourteen.
Oh, there's states in the same situation.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're not, I mean, actually Vermont's much ahead of, I mean, we're doing much better than a lot of places.
Or we're behind the curve.
Well, I, you know, but what I'm saying is, and originally when we got great, good data, it's because we were ahead of the minimum standard that was required.
Right.
And we have not been able, despite our best efforts, to keep up with this stepped curve of expectation. And I think there are a couple of things to be aware of as the public and people interested in, in education. Is that the Congress has struggled to make any decisions regarding the renewal, the reauthorization of ESEA. Or the No Child Left Behind requirements. Now, that may be good news, but on the other hand, it's still hanging around our necks. And, you know, the, the state of Vermont was unable to get a waiver to focus on the individual growth of students. As a measure of progress, which I think is not only lamentable, but irresponsible by the, by the administration. But we will continue to have to report and the public will see on the agency of education website. That Leland and Gray made AYP in reading and did not make AYP in math. And you can see the other schools across the SU. Now, the, the thing that is positive about it is you see there are four schools that, that did make adequate yearly progress in Wyndham Central. And there are only thirty-one in the state, I believe, I'm told. So, we got more than our share out of the sixty-two supervisor reunions. So, you know, I have to commend the staff and the leadership team, the principals of these schools and their efforts. And you can see that the major need remains to be in, at least there's more of a, of a need for improvement in math. Performance than there is in, in language arts at this point. Interestingly, Marlboro, that did not make it in either category this year. This reporting year, which is the fall of two thousand twelve data, did make it the previous year. So, that's once again, a different, you know, different group of kids. There were some eighth graders that graduated and there were some seventh graders that moved in eighth grade. And it's grades three through eight that determine that at the elementary schools. And then the other thing that I added for your interest was, of course, the participation requirement is very important. We try to strive for a hundred percent in Marlboro. And, and I think here there might have been another reason, but in Marlboro, it was just the refusal of parent to permit students to take the test, the children to take the test, so.
Yeah, that's sort of a holdover from the town.
It's lamentable, but that's, you know, fortunately, the state doesn't hold us accountable for a hundred percent participation based, you know, they'd like that, but they don't. And then I also added a column, in the second column, you'll see two numbers in parentheses. Just keep in mind that the second, the first number is the, the number of independent education plan students. That is special needs students with special education plans. And you can see that Brookline Newfane has a very large percentage of that population. Certainly approaching the number that Leland and Gray has. And, and then you can see that the meals, what I call meals abbreviated that, it's really the free and reduced lunch students. Now, these, as Durin says, we know that well, well, well beyond forty-one, forty percent of the students at Leland and Gray would qualify. But they don't qualify because they refuse to apply. They, you know, if they don't complete the forms as a family, they don't, they can't be counted. So, this is a typical problem. It's always underreporting and underrepresentation at the high school, middle school level. Cause kids don't wanna be involved in that kind of thing. The numbers are more accurate at the elementary level. And you can see that the, what we generally call the lower socioeconomic sector is, is well represented among all our schools. And perhaps to the least degree, at least in these figures, in this group of tested students in Dover. And, and the same thing with special needs students, is the smallest number in Dover. I think Dover, once again, scored about second in the state. And it's really commendable that they're able to keep up that consistent performance. Now, I'm calling this the attention of all the boards. I've gone around this chart to all the boards. I will send it out electronically after I get around everybody. But I welcome your questions. I, I take the opportunity to recognize or reinforce. The idea that your investments of the consolidated federal grant, the learning opportunities in Dr. Sharma's work on mathematics is essential. And critical to continuing the progress we see. And, and certainly the effort at Sims, writing across the curriculum, reading across the curriculum at the, among all our courses at the high school. And in the elementary schools, the Fawness and Pennell, professional development. And literacy coaches at each school, probably followed by the math coaches. There's also a math, WCSU math team that represents all grade levels and has a teacher from every school working with Dr. Sharma. Two from Leland and Gray, as well as Durin and Laura Hazen working with that group. These are things that have to continue over time to bear results. And I appreciate the board's support of a continued focus on those, on those areas. Questions on that? I have, well, a piece of brighter news. You don't know about this, Emily, but a check arrived in my office for a thousand dollars. You know what that was for? That's because you and I went to the Vermont Superintendent's Association of Leadership, whatever they call that workshop last spring. Where they were encouraging board members and, and superintendents to go together.
So, where did that come from?
That came from the Vermont Insurance Trust.
School Board Insurance.
Yeah, School Board Insurance Trust, yeah. So, I'm kinda surprised. But anyway, we'll, we'll put that into professional development. It was a very useful deal, but I'm just saying that, you know, sometimes we wonder whether you're, you know, whether the time of the boards is, you know. When you're invited to these things, whether it's worthwhile. And just point out that it's one of the few times when there actually was a little, little surprise, green lining to the cloud there.
That's nice to hear.
Inspiring at the end, so. Inspiring at the end. So, and then, uh, the only other thing is that I, I call your attention, we have, because of our building here, new building improvement, we had an Act 250 permit that was granted. Was anything on the board yet? I know Emily was, but, uh, anyway, this one, we did the bond and we did the building.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, anyway, one of the things that the Select Board of Townsend is reminding us of is that we have the responsibility to maintain a right of way to the back of the town hall. In fact, I have Brett Sanderson, who was the engineer on this, clarifying what that actually means. But I think that Townsend's Select Board is considering putting in a parking lot in back of their town hall. And I pointed out to one of the Select Board members, David Diznorf, who presented this idea to me, that, you know, this really would be quite disruptive of educational purpose of, of our campus. And to have people driving in and out there around Dutton Gym is really a cause for concern by me. There's nothing to be alarmed about yet. There's no permit or anything going on. But I, I'm, I'm being proactive and I want to make sure if you hear rumors about this, that it doesn't, yeah, you know, they come down the hill and they go around the gym and then back of the town hall. Now, the reason that they, the permit said that, or the reason that was in one of the original proposals was because we have parking out front here, too. But they can't make a driveway between Dutton Gym and the town hall or between the town hall and the neighbor, because on one side is their septic system and on the other side is the well. That's what they say they can't. Of course, you can always move a well and you can move a septic system for that matter.
So, one of the previous bonds had proposed a parking area out behind that we would have used, you know. But that failed.
Yeah, that plan failed. So, anyway, I, I don't want to be alarmist, but I want to make sure you have your eyes and ears open to what's possible. And I think if there's any other questions, I have a lot of information about Red, as Emily does, and Frank can get on with his finances and tell us that we're.
What was that Vermont School Board?
Vermont School Board Insurance Trust.
No, that's a meeting you went to.
Oh, it was the Vermont School, it was actually a co-venture, really, wasn't it? With the Vermont Superintendent's Association and the Vermont School Boards Association.
VSA and VSB.
Yeah, VSA and VSB conference, spring conference. But it was a special leadership academy that they had, a workshop that happened beforehand. So, you had to go early.
Board chairs and superintendents.
I just wrote leadership.
Yeah, we, we spent the night, we spent an evening prior to that up there. We went up earlier, a little hot dogs and got up and learned some things in exchange with other boards.
The three to seven or eight o'clock.
Yeah.
You may not know this, but last summer, there was a fire adjacent to the school, Crouppen Smith's house. What's the status of that property? Is, is, are they building something there? Is the land for sale? Does anybody know?
I, I don't know, but I think if it were sale, it would be posted. I mean, but I, I know that it's still her property and it's hers.
There's no sign of construction or anything?
I don't think there's been a permit or anything I've seen put to town. Other than, I think its neighbors would be informed if there was a permit.
Reason I ask is that in an ideal world, that'd be really nice to, to have this.
Well, we take that.
Seeing as we're so wedged in between a hail.
We had, we had, that was part of discussion earlier, too, when we were doing about the bond and so forth. Yeah, we're familiar with that possibility.
Using, you know, I mean, we actually had proposed a purchase of some of her land off the back.
To improve our parking situation as well.
That was a.
But seeing as, you know, her farmhouse is no longer there, you know.
Yeah, good point. What we'll take.
I'm sure we've.
You made me think of something else.
Keep our ears out.
If you've been tuned into the newspapers, a couple of our graduates, actually a student still here, Alana Redden and Emma Redden have been published in the newspaper with.
Very fascinating stuff.
Fabulous report, when Alana buy it from, from Turkey and Emma's from her efforts regarding domestic violence.
Fascinating, a summer she.
And if you haven't, you should go on the reformer. I actually cut it out. I have it in the office, but I'll, I'll share it with the New Brook Board, of course. But, uh, kids are from Newfane.
There's a link on our website.
Oh, is it?
Alana is a student contributor to, regular contributor to the reformer.
Yeah.
So, she.
She's in Turkey or where?
Will be writing probably a piece every month for her senior year.
Emma's a graduate from here going, she's an ambassador, she's a junior, I think. Ambassador, so this was the summer.
Anyway, it's, you know, it's always good to see your kids going off and, you know, writing well and doing good things. Also, another grad we have employed at Townsend for a couple of weeks, working on the computer setup is Seth Cherries.
Nice.
Graduated just last year?
Just this, two years ago, I think.
Two years ago, okay. Anyway.
Great.
We're looking for good folks.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Stephen? Network, move on to you, Frank.
Okay, maybe the first thing, if I could take care of the food service management contract. It's, uh, it's an annual contract that the Agency of Education, the Child Nutrition Office requires the board to approve annually if we wish to extend the contract. And, um, the management fee of $10,000 is the same. So, there's, we've anticipated that and there's no, no effect on the budget. So, I, I would recommend that the board accept the contract renewal for the fiscal year 14, that we will extend to the Abbey Food Group.
You have a motion for that?
Sure.
Okay, Bum moved it and Patty seconded it? Did you get the motion? Very good. It's very efficient.
You're good.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments on this? This is the same thing we did last year. And I'm glad that we're still seeing that $10,000 number not change. I know there's been a lot of connection with the Abbey Group for nutrition. And there were new rules that came out this year from the federal government and so everything's going well and soon.
My kids seem to like it.
Working on staying on top of it.
We can always do better.
Yeah. Always the number one concern in any student climate survey is the cafeteria.
In any school?
In every school. Even where this food is, matches any great restaurant.
Yeah.
They want fish sticks.
Well. By comparison, this is a fee that is favorable to the smaller schools, actually. Compares favorably, and that's because of the size advantage.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, you ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion to approve the food service contract for another year for $10,000 with Abbey Group, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, and I'll just make a brief financial report, a verbal report. We're in the middle of consolidating all of the transactions for the fiscal year. This week, the statistical reports are due to the Agency of, or Agency of Education. And, um, and that's a required submittal that allows us to receive the tax revenues and all of the grants and so on. So, it's, it's a major data collection and a lot of effort. And we will, we will meet that requirement. And then, and that's this, this Friday. And then as soon as that's over, we'll jump into the preparations for the CPA audits. And we, we will have audits for all of our school districts this year. Um, but, uh, just a quick check in regarding how Leland and Gray is wrapping up the fiscal year. You, you recall 6.5 million was the budget. As I had reported earlier, we have confirmed the shortfall in the tuition revenue. So, no surprise there. We saw that, um, back in December. It is about 12 students is where we were short from the tuition budget. So, the budget was 975,000 and I think we're going to come in around 812. 163,000 short. I, I also mentioned that we have, um, we have gained a significant number of additional revenues in the general fund that weren't anticipated as of the, um, the budget development. So, uh, we'll, we'll end up the revenue side favorable. We'll actually overcome that shortfall and, and we will record more than 6.5 million in revenues when we're done. And again, I've reported to you on that. That's things like the SAP grant that Durin had secured for Leland and Gray, $40,000. There's a SERV grant, which we received $20,000. There's a, a number of consolidated federal program grants that have been increased to Leland and Gray for professional development, technology. And, uh, Durin did a great job with the in-service collaboration with the Wyndham Southwest and, uh, and Southeast. And I think we received about 14, almost $14,000 in, in fees from, from other educational institutions.
Service provided for them. They learned a lot.
Yeah, that's great.
But with all of those grants, they, they, they have a specific purpose. And, and so, so we will spend those grants on those purposes that I just mentioned, which means we will have a shortfall between revenues and expenses. We'll spend all of the grant money. And we, we, we have made up some of the shortfall in tuition through other, other sources of revenue, but it, but we will run a deficit. But I think it will be less than 2% of the budget. So, our, you know, our budget's 6.5 million and 2% is about 130,000. I think will be less than a 2% variance when we're all done. And when you put that into the fiscal year, 15 planning, 2% variance is, is not that unusual. So, we'd like it if it was a 2% surplus, but that's difficult to control. The, uh, you know, the, um, the choices of families moving and, and entering the system. So, on the expense side, we, we will, um, see, as I said, about, there's about 130,000 in grants that we will spend. So, you'll see 130,000 spent more than the original budget. As I said, all, all that funding has been secured and it's, it pays for that, all of those activities. And aside from that, we've controlled the general fund very much according to the plan. There was a little bit of a variance in special ed sometimes that, that's been significant. It's not that significant this year. So, overall, the, the general fund will, will be in a similar 2% variance. So, by the end of the week, I'll, I'll have, um, done the 99% test and we'll submit to the Agency of Information. And then I'll give you a more final detailed report. Probably it'll be the report I submit to the auditors in September.
Very good.
Any questions I can?
I know you and your office have been extremely busy, Frank.
Yeah, we've got Hammer and Tom here.
We, we know that. And I mean, maybe everybody doesn't know that. I'm certainly aware of that and, and I appreciate that great wrap-up for us that I know you must have pulled out of your hat, knowing what you've been going through. Frank is really sitting in there with his staff, working their tails off.
And people assume that things quiet down in the superintendent's office in the summer.
Not, not so. And I'm not trying to minimize your schedule either, but it's pretty crazy in the business.
But, but I think I often, you know, it's surprising how many people say, oh, how are things going? You taking it easy this summer or whatever? It's just, it's not happening.
No, it doesn't.
And I think it's, it may have won maybe 10, 15 years ago. Maybe that was more the case, that things let up a little bit. But, uh, it's, it's, you know, it's, there's just a lot more demands on our, on our administrative reporting than we had.
Yeah, the stakes are much higher than they used to be.
That's true, too.
There were, this statistical report, reporting before Act 60, a lot of towns didn't bother to send in the report because their grand list paid for the education in the town and they didn't care. But, but now, if we don't have this in, it's a $1,000 a day fine for our system and it's, and they will not send us any money. So, we would not be able to make payroll. We would not be able to operate. So, they are high stakes and, uh, and the audit standards have, um, have increased tremendously. So, um, it, it is quite a race to get, to get things reported on time. But we've been doing it a long time and I, we, we're doing, uh, we're on track. We'll, we'll make the requirement.
We're lucky to have Frank.
We are.
Amen.
This annual audit that you're going to be.
CPA audit, yeah.
CPA audit, CPA, that comes with like a $50,000 price tag?
For the district, it's about nearly 100,000. For Leland and Gray, it's, it's all of our, all of our schools in the supervisory union. So, for Leland and Gray, that's a little less than 20,000.
Yeah, that's what I seem to remember.
And starting this year, every year, elementary schools have to do it, whereas they only have to do it every five years.
That's right.
Three.
Yeah, every three, yeah. The legislature made that, that change. I don't think they changed that to the municipalities, but they did make that change for the schools.
Yes, they did. And that affects most of Wyndham Central elementary schools. I mean, Newfane was, was doing it every year anyway. But I think most of the rest were a three-year cycle?
They were, yeah.
So, this is a big change for.
And to illustrate Wyndham with a budget of what, one?
300,000.
$300,000. It's paying $8,500 to $10,000 a year on an audit. And they're looking at themselves saying, I mean, this is a pair of, this is a, you know, this is somebody could help some kids learn.
That's insane.
And, and I would point out to the legislators who passed this law that in small town Vermont, small boards, even Leland and Gray board, you look at every single one of those bills and invoices. There's plenty of scrutiny on, on expenditures.
The primary explanation from the agency, when, when the business managers have asked what, what prompted is, it, it's what we were just talking about, that the, the legislature has put so much money through, um, the, uh, the, the school system that, that is state money. But it's not, it's no longer considered, you know, the, it's, it's not self-contained as it used to be.
With the statewide funding now.
So, they're saying because billion dollars.
Account for them, be able to be sure it's being used correctly.
From their point of view, it's, it's state money. They want to see, uh, another third-party professional looking at.
Fair enough. It would be nice that they contributed in some shape or form.
Helped fund.
Held us harmless for the expense, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It is a lot of money.
Yeah.
Well, especially it isn't, it isn't proportional. That's, I mean, that's the problem with the small schools.
And encourage your children to become auditors.
Yeah, that's the other concern.
Accountants are, accountants are going to be needed a little more, I would assume.
Well, that's the concern in, in the state is that it's already been difficult to get competitive bids. And now that the demand has tripled, it's hard to imagine how, if you couldn't get three competitive bids easily in a rural system like ours, maybe you could in Burlington or Brattleboro, but in a rural system, it was difficult to get three bids. And now that you've tripled the, the requirements, it's going to be interesting to see what.
It's a huge amount of time, right? But not for a lot of money.
Some work and some demand and price.
It's going to be interesting to watch how this.
Yeah.
But anyway, thank you, Frank.
You're welcome.
Very helpful. Anything else for Frank? Okay, thanks. All right, old business. Recommendation on NEAS, you all have the white paper that we requested.
So, our recommendation remains, ask to do research, that it really isn't cost-effective or the pros and cons don't mean in favor. I think we recapped the research that Durin and I did actually independently and put together from different sources. So, go ahead, Penny.
Um, I just had one question. I thought it was great. But now, don't they also, NEAS, do they assess our building? And how would that be done so that we know that?
I actually have that in here, too, as well. How are facilities assessed?
Right.
Yeah.
In this new, it wasn't mentioned as one of the.
So, we want to be sure that's on the radar, I would think. I mean, not that you don't every day do what you have to do to building, but.
Stephen, did you experience?
I have, I have never personally been a part of a NEAS evaluation.
She's just been picking up the pieces for previous ones.
Yeah, yeah.
The actual decennial evaluation. So, can, do you have experience in how they would actually do the building and grounds assessment?
Well, they have.
Frank knows a little about that.
Frank, they have a subcommittee that, that looks into that.
A Leland and Gray subcommittee.
Well, there's a self-study, study committee, but that's parallel with their own visiting committee, subcommittee. But what I, what I would point out is, we may imagine that there's some. But what I would point out is, we may imagine that there's some sort of list of standards out there that are kind of universal. That really is not the case. I mean, this is a bit of a situational ethic and is very highly influenced by the perceived agenda and needs of the community. So, you know, if...
Which can be very relevant.
And Brattleboro used it very effectively, used the NEASK opportunity to deem their building terribly, what do you call it, in need of repair. And so that's an example of where, in fact, sometime in the future, we as a school community might, in fact, administration might recommend that we go through a NEASK evaluation once again. We're always welcome. They love to have more people, more schools involved because we have a particular purpose in mind, like we were trying to leverage the community to add on to the building, build a bond, improve the facility. Now, I don't want to say that's the sole reason why Brattleboro did it, but they used it that way to support the vote, which was the largest capital bond and expenditure in the state at the time for anything. So, but there was previously in the state of Vermont, public school approval standards that had some specific square footage. Now, there are things that are, in terms of buildings, facilities, Ed McGrath actually is a member and tends the maintenance and supervisory staff for all the buildings. There are light standards, for example, lighting standards, you know, plenty of lumens and so forth. And in fact, most of our schools are overlit now by present standards. The energy guy up at the VSB, Norm Edkin, just told me that you ought to have that reviewed again because you probably, and if you go through some classrooms in some buildings and see, like in my office, that we only have one bar up, there's only one bar in there, for example, anyway. It may be that we are overlighting by the new standard. So this is a movable situation. And I think that there's been so much frustration with how those kinds of standards can get to be really picky-un that there is not any longer a particular standard. There is, there are standards for square footage and safety issues for prepay and kindergarten. And those are specific and that's why we have a particular criteria licensure that has to go through approval for that.
But I think Patty's point is well-taken, that that shouldn't go off the radar screen as we leave a NEASK process, that we do need to continue to assess our facilities and make sure that we have a process for doing that. We used to rely on that NEASK piece for that and certainly we used it ourselves as feedback for what we were, what our previous bonds proposals were.
It's also an asset of the taxidermy, so they want them to keep it up and keep it well.
And it's easy to, in tight budgets, it's easy to forget.
You as a board have to constantly ask the question of budget per time when it's the question between maintenance and staffing, you know, that it's a tough compromise. And so, but I mentioned another thing that is another wild card in any of that kind of discussion. As you can imagine, over a ten-year cycle of a NEASK approval process, the enrollment figures can change quite a bit and the projections. So the number of schools that have built additions and added something and then not had the kids to fill it, specifically Dover, are far exceed, exceed at this point in time the number of schools that have inadequate number of classrooms in Vermont anyway.
I would also like to mention that Frank, Ed McGrath, the director of Buildings and Grounds, and I meet regularly and talk about building issues, repair, safety, exits. We've ordered new signs to put up around the building. Something that has come up as a concern is air quality and we have found what the culprits of some air quality issues are, including students and others using spray products. So we're going to have hanging signs in the restrooms and locker rooms about not using spray products because they have the volatile organic chemicals. So that's an ongoing process. Now, it's not an evaluation, but it's something that we have a pulse on regularly.
I see things in invoices all the time.
Right, exactly. So maybe you can figure out a way to work something into there at least, into an evaluation process. The other question I had was engagement and evaluation process were involved and you mentioned a number of different constituents. You didn't mention school board and I think probably school board should be involved in some level.
Representation, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to be careful not to be too many, but a representative.
I'm not saying, I'm not even saying on a committee. I'm just saying school board. This doesn't say how the evaluation process would take place, it's just engagement. And I think school board should, they're the pulse on the community, I hope, and we try to be. I think it's important.
Thank you.
Is there anything else on this? Any other comments or questions? It's quite a bit in here. I didn't see an awful lot of changes. It just fleshed it out. I did wonder, you mentioned that you talked to three different officials and you only named two. I mean, it didn't really matter. So you talked to two.
I spoke with one, you spoke with one.
Yeah, well, I spoke with others too, but I only quoted John Fisher.
So that's just...
It's a typo.
Fine, thanks.
I spoke with Stephen Dale and Mark.
Right.
I'm going to go.
Okay. We don't, we've, if everybody feels that this is adequate to follow up, inadequate follow-up to our motion the last time, we really don't need any further action as far as the motion was. I mean, it said we accept it pending this paper.
Yeah.
Is that satisfying you?
It does and it's timely. I have a letter from NEASK saying that we have to submit our application no later than tomorrow.
Okay, so unless the board has any different sentiment from the last time we met or is dissatisfied with the white paper, we will move forward. Okay?
My name suggests we take the bill for the dues out of...
There you go.
We might not want to pay this one.
It would save thirty-nine hundred dollars right off the bat.
Go, Frank.
Sounds good.
When you approve it, approve it minus the...
Okay. Go ahead.
Did the motion last time include anything about a schedule for when these would be, these committees would be implemented?
I can tell you specifically what the motion said. The motion said, Patty made a motion to support the administration's recommendation to withdraw the membership from NEASK pending the approval of a white paper justifying the action for leaving NEASK. It passed unanimously.
So you could approve the white paper date. Now, the question is in terms of a timeline, which I think Durin and I are not prepared to commit to that at this point, but we should.
But you're right, it does say pending the approval.
Certainly can come up with something.
So we probably should make a motion to approve the white paper.
Within a year or...
Oh, the timeline within a year, oh, yeah.
I had, a meeting was planned for the summer for the other schools interested in creating an alternative process, so Otter Valley, Vergence, and they were unable to make the summer meeting because of all the schedules. So that should happen this fall and to create a plan this year. That's not carrying out an evaluation, but instead making a plan for how we would go ahead and do that. So that I would, so that I would be sharing with you.
So do you have an idea of when, what month that might be on this?
In terms of when the plan would be finished?
No, for the meeting.
Well, I mean, either. I think it's a good question. There's a timeline for...
So my hope is that we get together very soon, September, and to hammer out a plan that involves the input from the different constituents mentioned, to have that completed in June. So that would be 2014. Because, you know, getting five principals together in the same room to work for a few hours is not an easy task. It'll probably be four or five meetings throughout the school year, plus we have our own work to do in the intervals of those meetings.
And that would include, like, which of these, whether the Green Star report was used or whether the, which process of reporting would be implemented?
Yes. So it would describe the whole process and then, I guess, figure out who is going to pilot it. Who would be the first school to be evaluated with this process? Or would it be something that we did at the same time together so that there would, a lot of that sharing would go on that's so important in that process?
Okay. Is that adequate?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
You sort of thought you needed a motion because...
I do think, well, I mean, I honestly, I'm not sure we actually do, but I think it's probably a good idea since we set approval.
I think Patty's previous motion at the previous meeting...
Set approval.
Said upon approval, so the board at this point should approve this.
The question is, do we, we could approve by consensus, but I think it's smart to probably make a motion. So if someone wants to make a motion to approve the white paper, let's go ahead. If not?
Move to approve the white paper titled Improving the Evaluation of School Quality.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Got that, Bruce? Okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of approving the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Any extensions? Okay, mutual passes. Thank you. All right. Status report for the two joint SU studies. That is still nothing to really report on, but there is a written document that is in draft form and will be submitted at some point when people have time to look at it.
Yeah, to bring you up to date, there are two joint studies going on. Actually, the second study isn't really undertaken yet, but the previous one was with the committee of six, three representatives from our WCSU board and three from WSSU board.
Wyndham Southwest.
Wilmington. And so that study is now in draft from the consultant, John Everett. And in fact, I've reviewed it and edited. He made two corrections, slight corrections of fact. That's the process that's happening on the other, our counterpart on the other side. And Emily and Seth Boyd, chair of the WSSU board, will be looking at that as well. And then it'll be released for public. And presumably, that committee of six will reconvene to determine what next steps should be taken in consultation with the two superintendents. I do have a counterpart. I don't have met the person yet, but there is a superintendent in Wilmington now hired. And his contract, I think, yeah, I've heard some mail. Does anybody know the name? I'm sorry. Anyway.
I was told.
His contract's going to continue for, I think it's a two-year contract, which ends up providing a bridge to the future from when this next report has to come out regarding the organization of the, or the possible potential reorganization of that SU and the membership of the towns in it. April one of 2014 was the deadline, the deadline from the Agency of Education.
To their SU.
To their SU and that. So we expect that that will happen. And we have met the consultant for that study and it remains to be seen to what extent the Wyndham Southeast, as the Brattleboro Supervisory Union and the Bennington one would be included because they'll be invited, but whether they are...
That's the process, the stage we're in right now. Seth and the Wyndham Southwest Supervisory Union are developing letters to send to the surrounding SUs to invite them to participate. And then we'll meet, so.
It's exciting times.
For what?
That's right.
Exactly. And then that leads us into the RED. Maybe this is red.
Yes.
Proposal that has finally gone over every hurdle.
Went to the state today, actually. I got it out there.
Which is actually out there.
So if you want a hard copy of this RED study, I can save you paper at home if you want a hard copy. It's on, it'll be online shortly if not, if you haven't seen it already. Anybody want a hard copy?
You should definitely review it if you can, whether you take the hard copy or review it online and you have...
You have a loose paper in there because it's a correction. The paper, don't lose the paper that's in there. I made an inadvertent error. I was able to get stickies to go through a copier today, which I thought was never possible. I did it inadvertently. Explain what the stickies are, Emily. I'm quite embarrassed. Frank, you want to look at it? You want a copy for yourself there?
Sure, if you got an extra one.
Sure, I got it, yeah. Okay, so first of all, backtrack a little bit. Let's go over the timeline. So the state, yeah, the state board will hear this on Tuesday. Emily and I will be there to defend the articles. August twentieth. And then the state board will take action and Emily was empowered, authorized by the RED study committee to make whatever compromise adjustments or accept stipulations in so long as they're in keeping with the sentiments of the study committee so that we can come away from that meeting on Tuesday with a clear yes and know where we stand regarding the next steps to leading to the vote on October eighth. Now, preceding the vote on October eighth, a warning will have to be posted in each town. And that warning will also include, interestingly, the candidates to serve on this board. And that should be of particular interest to you who are already serving on boards. Hopefully, some of you will step forward. You will have to undertake a petition because the only way to get on a printed ballot is through petition. We can't, you know, Jamaica, they probably vote from the floor.
By town, yeah.
It's by town. So this is what we're asking the state board of education to clarify with us exactly how that process happens because presumably it has to happen, the petitioning process has to conclude at least thirty to forty days before the actual vote. So it's a short time window between late August and just the very first or second of September to get the petition in.
So word needs to get out there that, you know, if these, if everything gets approved by the state board of education and this vote is going forward, people who are interested in serving on a regional education or Wyndham Central Education District Board, depending on how, it could be a regional education, but anyway. If you want to serve on the new, the new governance model system, you have to have your petition in probably the beginning of September.
Yeah, I would say shoot before the beginning of September. Right. Now, if you look on page six of the document in front of you, I just want to alert you that what, how that pertains to the places you may represent. You can see that Brookline has one member on this, if it's formed, on this entity. And that one member would serve for three years. So if you're stepping forward to be elected in Brookline, it would be a three-year commitment, okay? Anyway, and then Jamaica, you see there are two positions. One is a two-year and one's a three-year. And of course, you have to run for the specific number of years. Otherwise, it's not clear to the voters who, what they're signing, what they're voting for. And NuFain has four members, you see, so you have to decide and encourage your friends and neighbors to petition to be on the ballot if they're interested to serve. Anyway, that's all I wanted to make clear. In towns, you need three, one for one year, one for two years, and one for three years. And the thing is that people will be voting for you whether the entity gets formed or not. You know, I mean, it's, but the law, we tried to get around this, but we can't get around it. The law says we got to vote at the same time you vote on the entity. So it's kind of strange in a way. If it fails, you know what I mean? If it fails, you're elected to an office and they exist.
Well, of course, no one when they're voting knows what the outcome will be, so I hope they'll vote for it. And I hope people will put their names in. I mean, we have four people. What we're hoping is that at least some current school board members will submit their names to serve so there will be some experience coming on that board. It doesn't need to be any school board member. It's any community member from these five towns.
Yeah, that's right.
So speak to your neighbors, speak to your friends.
But we still exist, right?
Yes, and the school boards that presently exist still exist until through June thirtieth.
Oh, then Leland and Gray...
I mean, Leland and Gray, just like all the other school district boards, will go away.
At June thirtieth.
If it's a positive vote.
If it's a positive vote. And their purpose is to finish out the fiscal year, you know, control the direction of the schools and the operations through June thirtieth of 2014.
So we'd still have town meeting and be voted back in supposedly for the first time if you're up.
For a very short term, yeah.
If anybody is up for this, something...
People could serve in both capacities if they're willing. The WCED board, the new board, would be serving the public by deciding on mission and philosophy and a policy and budget particularly. I mean, they have to get going on a budget right away for FY fifteen. So it's, you know, there's work to be done. It's not just, you know, a pro forma situation. And so I think that takes you through the timeline process pretty much. The RED committee will be meeting on the twenty-first, Wednesday the twenty-first, to seven, yeah.
August.
August, yes.
Day after.
Is it day after so we know what's... Is it day after, so we know what's happening?
You're in Kansas?
Oh, that's too bad. Well, anyway.
Sorry.
That's how we're gonna make the plans for the public, you know, informational aspect that will be quite intense and short term and leading to that October 8th vote. Now, there is in this article, it makes clear the WCED, the new board, would not be in effect until November 15th. That's because we have to allow at least a 30-day period of review by the public. They can petition to revote an issue.
This November.
Right.
Yeah.
They have 30 days following the vote.
So it'd be premature to just assume that the entity were formed until that period passed.
We decided to give it a few extra days.
Yeah, we give it a few extra days. Now, the reason why I inserted this new page, which it should be in there as being the one that we submitted to the state, is because inadvertently, on page seven, you see, I have some stickies there that I got copied, and I'm actually leaving them in there for you because they will inform you as to what Emily and I have discussed in consultation regarding the agencies. When we go on Tuesday before the State Board, the Secretary of Education, Armando Velasega, will respectfully decline to support the entire document. He will enthusiastically support every aspect of it except on page seven, the last paragraph of Article 12, which is called the two-vote provision. And you know that Bruce was present in all these discussions, so he probably appreciates what we're talking about there. What that was, was a clause to, by the Study Committee, to empower or strengthen the hand insure, it's really an insurance policy, for the small town against the tyranny of the large in population. Okay? That's what's going on. And so when the committee goes to present to the public these articles, the committee felt strongly that this strengthens the opportunity for a positive vote because a member of the board from Wyndham, there's only one from Wyndham if it were formed, and one from Brookline, from a small town, could call for a second vote and say, now, hold it, wait, wait a minute, let's see if the towns are really in favor of us and vote by town. If there are five towns, it would take three towns to say yes. Not the public of the town, but the members of that board. And if it were only four members, if Wyndham wasn't in, then it'd be two to two. That wouldn't pass. So it is a bit of a protection or a bit of a... but I know that I believe very strongly, from the experience of this board and others, that boards generally want to work towards consensus. They don't want to have a controversial divisive issue. So I doubt this will be implemented very, used very often. But the Agency of Education legal advice is, it's not legal because it's not one person, one vote. It's a legal problem for them. And people, yeah, well, the Constitution originally had, people counted as three-fifths and all that, so we're not going too far back in the Constitution, but some people's three-fifths. But, you know, I will still argue in defense of this with the board. And what we, what the Study Committee said is, okay, if the State Board says, no way, we're not gonna be able to get this to happen, we won't approve it with that article, then probably we'll agree to it and try to bring it to a vote anyway. But alternatively, we inserted here a couple of possibilities that Emily may present if called upon for compromise to limit the two-vote option to bylaws or to budget and bylaws. So that you're not just bringing it up for any old thing.
For any old...
And bylaws are the most important issue from governance point of view. Budget is the most important thing from a political, you know, public interest point of view. So it'll be interesting to see what the State Board says about that.
That sounds fair.
So these are only gonna be inserted if necessary.
That's right.
Ignore them.
Ignore them. Rip them out if you want, but I'm just saying that it's, if you go online, you won't see that, but, you know. And the State Board won't see that either. But I just wanted to make sure you knew that there's a lot of political consideration going on here and legal, based on legal advice. And these articles were revised at our August 7th meeting based on legal advice from the Agency of Education that the committee, Bruce was there, and was found acceptable.
I mean, I like, I could go with the bylaws and the budget being the only things, because those to me are the biggest things, you know. I mean, some of the other stuff we vote on is like, okay.
Can I ask a question about Article 16? Not about the building a new elementary school for Jamaican towns. The first paragraph, statewide opportunities for school choice?
Yeah, there's confusion about what that means. The law changed, and the new law is that if you want to send your child to a public school in Vermont, you could send your child to Grand Isle if you chose.
Right now, our public school choice is regional. So we do a public school choice, we let 10 in, 10 out, right? It's regional.
Well, it's changed this year.
Well, that, okay, then it's this year it's changed.
We voted to limit the number of students we would allow to come here, but we raised it from 10.
Anyway, the point was, it's always been regional, and now it's statewide. But it's public.
That's what, that's what the state was.
Not private schools, not independent schools, but it's public school choice. So if someone wanted to send their kid to Brattleboro in the past, they could apply through the system that was, that we've always approved every year in place.
And if they met the quota, they'd be okay.
Now, if they would like to go to Mount Pili or a high school, they could do the same thing.
Just have to get them there and get them back.
But they still have to go through the same channels, meet the requirements.
They have to meet all that. Yeah. And there isn't, but the quota or the number is quite, quite increased, 10% or something like that. It's 30 to 40 or something at a size, school like that.
I think they limited it to accepting 24 students.
Yeah.
But we have to allow 200, I think, 24 to leave. That's the 10%.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Was that elementary and secondary, or is that just secondary?
No, it's just nine through 12.
Nine, 12.
As a result, a student registered this summer, someone moved nearby to Athens or Grafton and just said, you're the closest high school. And I called the superintendent in Bellas Falls, and I said, okay, you know, just have them fill out, we have a couple of forms, but students starting here in the fall. And a year ago, that would not have happened.
They would've had to been applied back in February.
And we were already, I think, at 10.
Yeah, we were at the limit. We were doing a lot, we were almost gonna have to do a lot to get in.
Yeah, you remember, we had a conversation about that at the board level.
So like that situation where the kids weren't really living in Jamaica, they were living somewhere else, that wouldn't matter now, right?
Some of those problems have been reduced. We do have to figure out where they live, though, in terms of the ATM.
Right.
Other questions?
So that's the answer to that.
Yeah. It's interesting. We smiled, Beaum, because the State, the Chairman of the State Board of Education has just the same question today, you know, what that was, because he wasn't aware that the law had changed. And it really isn't, you know, it wasn't advertised. It isn't in some ways that much different, but it is significant for the few individual cases to which it applies. And it does show a trend among the legislature to make it more accessible, choice more accessible.
So you want to be the receiver, you want to be the sending.
That's right.
Within the context, I guess, of just reading it, it seems like it's just open season.
Well, we are concerned in Jamaica particularly. I think you have a segment of the population in Jamaica who feel very strongly they want their kids to go anywhere, and they think if perhaps there's a change in a vote to this WCED, maybe they'll have that option. Well, it really isn't gonna affect them that way at all. They still, as the WCED, it's Leland and Gray, middle school, high school, and if they go someplace else, they have to pay tuition themselves.
Well, I mean, I think that's why we cited the law in there, so that people were confused about it. But it's a point taken.
Thank you for the careful reading.
A little late to change it now, but it's probably something.
Mike, keep in mind in the timeline, when we go to the public information, this will be available online, but the, one of the burdens of the committee or responsibilities of the committee is to edit this or bring up the high points, question and answers, you know, because this is not a particularly accessible document, you know, from most people's point of view.
And what was summarized?
Reading through all these articles is a good way to promote, you know, good sound sleep in some people's minds. So I think we have to hit the high points and make sure they understand what the changes are over the present situation and the pros and cons and question and answers.
And as far as the board members, I mean, the committee members seem like a very fine group of people.
Well, they're not all, they're not willing to, they're not...
There are people who are sitting on there who are certainly not...
I mean, there's nothing precluding them from running, but it isn't, there's been no discussion about that. And I think we should, we'd all do well, saying we loosely, all of the members of these citizens of these towns should look at the ones themselves to find people to run.
Intact the town, it only has two on there, and they need a third.
It would be nice to see a lively, you know, response.
Well, I would, I would encourage all of the Leland and Gray board members to put their names in. I think they should. I mean, each town's gonna have a specific number, so you'd probably be running against some of, you know, your community members and maybe your elementary school district board members. But I think it's really important, and I'm serious about this, I think it's really important, if this does pass and we form one board that is pre-K-12, that there is some experience at the high school level. It's a pretty unique responsibility we take on. And so I would encourage all Leland and Gray board members, current and even past, to put their names in, because it will help. There's almost half the student body in our high school, middle and high.
And keep in mind, in Brookline, we still have one seat at the elementary board open, unfilled.
And in Newfane...
And in Newfane, we have two unfilled seats.
And we have...
At the elementary school?
Yes, and we have one at the high school, as we all know here.
So, I mean, it's...
We're short already for them.
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Questions? Any other questions?
No, almost immediately, each of the principals are gonna get involved in this advisory group to the board. What's the name of that?
You mean each local community, there's a possibility. Not a mandatory.
We have changed it from a, we've changed it back to...
May.
May. May form. Every town may form a school advisory committee in which the principal would participate.
But it certainly seems as if the, a new board would critically want...
They may or they may not.
Well, they would. I think, I think the board would be wise to undertake efforts to see that happen. But it's, as I said, if we can't people, get people to run for office for the regular boards, I wonder to what extent you're gonna, we're gonna be successful in having community members. And maybe they're so fearful something strange is gonna happen initially that they'll step forward.
Right. That's why we didn't, the committee didn't want to restrict it to have to do, people having to do it, because they expected something similar to what you were saying. Maybe originally, early on, the board, a town might want to do that, have a school advisory committee to help with the transition piece. But that, they may not have the commitment for people to fill it or whatever, or they may not find a need later. So that's why we said may.
That's a nice, good thing.
But it is a way to make it, have an influence at the local.
It's very open and transparent.
So they'll be making those decisions. Okay, anything else? And if you read it and you have any questions, don't hesitate to get ahold of me, or any of the other RED committee members.
I had my notes.
Okay, board members' ideas. We're not doing that one tonight.
Nope.
Again. Plans for the WCSU board retreat? We didn't get any feedback from you guys, so Stephen and I are working on an agenda.
I gave Emily a big, long list, and she's working on it. We'll pare it down.
With the officers.
But the, with the officers, yeah. But we will...
Oh, thank goodness.
Oh, thank goodness, yes, that's good.
Man, we haven't done a thing about it since...
And then we are gonna meet at the Hermitage. And by the way, you're in, you're all invited to attend. I hope you do attend. You're not gonna have to pay upfront. I'm gonna pay for the, for the whole deal out of WCSU, and then we're gonna bill the district for the people who come.
We really do, we want you all to be there.
We want everybody to come. We don't want...
If you can be there, please come.
We have to pay $25 for dinner, and I want it to be a nice, reasonable dinner. So that's what we're doing this time, and we'll see how it works for you. You can tell me if it's a bad idea later on.
It's a great location.
But we'll try it this time rather than you being reimbursed. So do, do attend.
It's a good, um, team building for Wyndham Central. We're gonna have a conversation certainly about this RED proposal, and I think it would be very helpful to have Leland and Gray representatives there.
Yeah, we hope you are SVP, but you just get back to Allison on that.
Yeah, there is a, is there a deadline?
No, I don't have a deadline yet, but I'm gonna, I've already had, I've already had to put in for a certain number of seats, so.
We should get an email out quickly.
Before the agenda, you get the...
Yeah, we gotta do that. I know.
It's good.
Okay. So school board breakfast. You all know, you're familiar with this, except Linda, you don't know about this. But we do, the school board puts on a breakfast every year, and we're planning on doing it again this year, I certainly hope, for the staff on the 26th.
Of August.
Of August. It's a Monday, right? Monday? And it'll be at 7:00 in the morning. I am not, I will be there. I will do what I normally do, except the pancakes. Somebody else has to take over the pancakes this year. I can't do that, too. I have too many things on. I will be making my two big pans of frittatas or stratas or whatever, and I will be making my big fruit salad, but someone else has to take on the pancakes. And if you're concerned about the cost of buying the ingredients for pancakes for that many staff, you just submit your receipt and the board funds will pay for that. So I, I mean, I have never paid for that, but I just, I can't, I can't take that on. So I need someone else to do this. And I did send an email to Dionne, who told me she wasn't coming, putting that out there, too. So I don't know if anybody, if anybody's gonna be able to be here, first of all.
I'll be here. I just can't do pancakes because I'm going right to work after.
I'll do it if somebody steers me in the right direction or whatever.
Oh, there's a nice kitchen there. We all said...
Are you doing, um...
Wouldn't there be armed revolt if I didn't?
Yes.
There probably would be. Joe's bacon is getting pretty famous. I will, I will admit.
Have you in the past had like a, on an email, a sign-up sheet or something?
Yeah, and I, I'll be happy to send an email out to everybody. The reason we did it that way in the past was because we hadn't, didn't have August school board meetings normally, but this time we skipped the July instead of the August. So I thought I'd bring it up to you all here while I could look you in the eye and say, you have to participate.
This is a big highlight with the staff.
So I will follow up with an email.
So what do we need?
So we need what we always need, which is...
Paper products?
Yeah, well, I always handle the paper. I'll do the paper products. I always get that. And I always get the extra ingredient, like we need butter and nuts or cream, or I'll get that, because I don't wanna lean too hard on the Abbeville family.
How many people do you need?
At the breakfast?
Monday morning, yeah, at the breakfast.
We're gonna need probably, well, you'll be here to do the bacon, I'll be here, you're gonna be here.
Thank you, Joe.
We need at least one or two others. It would be very helpful to have, you tell me you're in the kitchen more. You were in the kitchen too last year.
Me and Joe.
Me. I know Joe was in the kitchen. I don't know if it takes more than...
Yeah, somebody else was in the kitchen.
Yeah, so that's probably three. Two, two on the pancakes and you on the bacon and help.
Okay, well, it looks like you got help there.
What's involved with the pancakes? Bringing them, mix?
Bringing the batter and cooking them.
Okay, I don't mind. Do it. I mean, do I bring a frying?
No, no, we got the, it's a commercial kitchen.
Yeah, we need the grill.
You don't really need to bring anything. You just have to...
Myself.
Just yourself and, you know, they have all that.
Well, that's not true. We have to bring the ingredients to make that, all that. I used to make...
You want the mix for the pancakes.
I would make, what I did was I would put, do the dry mix together. I made buttermilk pancakes, so I did the dry mix together in double batches in Ziploc bags, and then I brought the buttermilk to add and the butter to add while we were mixing them up in the kitchen.
Yeah, I can do that. But what am I looking at in volume?
Quite a few.
Four hundred.
We're, well, we're feeding, we're feeding probably 75 people.
Seventy.
We invite Wyndham Central staff up, too. They don't always come, but we have to provide for them as well.
But we don't have our par educators here that day.
Okay.
So it's, that's it.
Seventy, seventy-five is plenty. Seventy, seventy-five.
I don't remember how much you made. It was too many pancakes last time, but I remember you had, I think it was two, two sets of batter that we made, and we didn't have the second one.
Right.
I don't remember how many that was.
I remember taking some dry home, so I mean, it's not a waste if you don't mix it that way. And I just made it later for other house guests.
So about 70, 470.
I froze those two.
Yeah, yeah.
That pancake for...
Not everybody eats pancakes, keep in mind.
No, they don't. And we, we'll need another fruit salad. I make a big one, but we need another big one. They eat a lot of fruit salad. We need things like yogurt and juice and yogurt juice. And sometimes people bring bagels, some, they don't go overall. We don't need a lot of baked goods, but something along the lines. I know Dionne made some really nice blueberry muffins last year, so sweet breads and things like that. You give us suggestions. What do you...
Lots of fruit salad. That's, you're right. It's very popular. Lots of fruit salad, that's, you're right, it's very popular.
And even, even fruit, if people don't have time to make a fruit salad, I mean, bananas and apples and oranges and stuff there for people to grab, and they're on a big schedule that day, and they're in a big crackin' hunt to make sure everybody eats.
That's a good idea, grapes, bunches of grapes and...
Yeah, maybe it's...
Now, should I bring maple syrup and butter and stuff like that, or is that...
Well, I, I did last year, I was, I mean, I...
I have my own maple syrup, so.
Really, you made your own this year?
I don't make it, but my trees are tapped, so I get it.
Wow, what a wonderful thing. That's so precious.
And, and I think Bruce brought some blueberry sauce last year of some sort to put on them as well, and that went over quite well, so there is an alternative, but, but yeah, we need maple syrup. I, I did, I brought it.
Yeah, I'll bring some.
When I did, when I was doing it. And like I said, if you, quiche always goes over well, I make a couple of big pans of frittatas or whatever to... But if somebody else wants to do it. Anyway, I'll send an email out, you're all going to, I mean, there's enough of you, they're going to be there that day. You can't be there.
I will.
And you will, but you...
Sure, you're the same thing happening.
Okay, so we've got one, two, three, four.
Sometimes it usually goes to a...
It goes to, Durin has a specific...
Eight thirty, seven forty-five to, to, well, the teachers will be done at eight fifteen.
We, yeah, and we, we usually start, people, people come in a little early sometimes, so we usually are prepared to feed at seven thirty.
We do it every year.
She says seven forty-five, but at least...
When do you want people to show up?
I'll need help, but by no later, if ever, when we, to cook the pancakes, you've got to cook, mix up the batter and everything. I'll probably be there at six thirty. So will you, probably, because he's going to get the bacon all spread out, I don't know. It's a lot of work.
Thank you so much, it really is a wonderful way to start the year for the teachers, they appreciate it very much.
I know they do, they really do, and they really appreciate board members being there as well. I mean, you know, you saw that, they, they truly do, they...
And they, they especially appreciate it, because I can no longer provide breakfast for them on the first day of Friday.
Right.
Budget doesn't permit it.
So I'll send an email and ask you to, to RSVP with what you're going to do, so we all know.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, I'll do that this one. Okay, but just put it in your calendars, the twenty-sixth, six-thirty in the morning, it's a Monday. Okay, group bills and payers, just...
Yeah, we need you a piece.
Well, there's an adjustment to it, so you guys do that for me.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Just give me the numbers, I'm not going to read it all, I'm going to read the total.
Okay, so...
I'm not a calculator, make the adjustment.
You can just take it off of the bottom one, right?
Yep.
And it's off of the general fund, so...
We don't need an exacting session, right?
Nope.
Nope. You're almost...
You're almost breaking the...
Yeah, we're almost...
Don't jinx it. My wife's going to make a little bit of a churro, she's like, shh. I'm going to send that over to her at ten.
Swings.
That's not good. See you, let me see you.
Yeah.
While he's doing that, I'll just, while he's doing that, I'll just mention, look at your next meetings, our next board meeting is September tenth, here, at seven. Red Study Committee meets August twenty-first, not the seventh.
Yeah, that's weird.
It's on August twenty-first, and that's at seven here as well. And the board retreat is August twenty-eighth, at five at the Hermitage in Dover.
It may be five-thirty, but it'll be by that time, yep. There's an Assets Institute information meeting that you'd be welcome to attend at four o'clock at the Dover, Dover Town Hall, Public Hall, and East Dover there, or top of the hill. And I'm going to go to that, that's information about tax, education tax and support of education.
And while we're working on that, we'll do the, the minutes. I just wanted to add to the minutes, Bruce, if you could just, if the board agrees to change this, I wanted to note why I called the need to order at seven twenty in the minutes. It said, do, which was when the quorum was reached. We didn't, we weren't just late, but we didn't have a quorum until seven twenty.
She'll be chatting.
That's a good point.
So if we could add that to the minutes.
I get it, you're somewhere.
Okay.
It's at the beginning.
Seven twenty, personal children.
Yeah, it says, number one was called to order, Emily won't call the need to order at seven twenty, and if we can just add to that, which was when a quorum was reached.
Do you know if Tara had it?
No, not yet.
No, 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 hopefully it's October.
And then, on, on the second page, Patty Dixon made a motion to the, to approve the tax anticipation note in the amount of a million dollars to fund the 2014 operating expenses. Said the motion was seconded, and it said here, all in favor, no opposed, motion passed unanimously, and then it said, discussion ensued. I think the discussion ensued should have been after the motion was seconded.
I would hope.
Because we didn't, I mean, there's no relevance to the discussion ensued below that, and so I'm pretty sure it was just misplaced. So if we could just take discussion ensued, insert it after the motion was seconded, which is when we had the discussion about it.
Yeah, it's not surprising that we had discussion after a motion, but usually it's about some other related issue, and we're concerned about what that is, which is probably what happened there, but I can't remember what it was.
Since it's in, well, I'm pretty positive, because she bolded the motion and that's bolded, so I'm pretty sure that that's what, if Allison were here, I'm sure she'd clarify that, but that is, I think, what it was. And one other minor thing, Wyndham Southwest initiated these two studies under, what is this section? Under administrative report, oh, I don't know what this, oh, under old business, yeah. Under old business, you can write this down, Bruce, and you'll see it when you look at the minutes. Under old business B, status report on the two joint studies, the last sentence should say, Wyndham Southwest initiated these two studies. It says Wyndham Southwest is, and then it says initiated these two studies, so just knock off the is.
Delete the is, right?
Okay, and that was all I had.
You're pushing my note taken.
Well, I, I know, but I figured if I was going to correct them, let's correct everything while I, that I saw. So I would make a motion to approve the minutes with those corrections. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or comments? Okay. I just wanted you to, I did this, make sure for clarity, if anybody reads them.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Any extensions? Okay, motion passed to approve the minutes, says corrected for August thirteenth, I mean, for August, uh, June order.
Bruce, you'll call Allison or something to get that to her somehow, so she can get those corrected and posted properly?
Yeah, he'll, yeah, he'll have to not only make the correction.
I will send the whole thing to her.
All right, fine.
And then she'll repost.
Okay, fine, yeah.
The draft of this, tonight's, and then the corrected.
The draft of tonight and the corrected of last time, that's what I'm...
Corrected, approved, is what she'll do. She knows what to do.
Because in these minutes, I may just say that that's what we get, we're, we fix it.
Yes.
Now, tomorrow night is Jamaica.
Is it tomorrow night?
Yeah, that's why I am, that's why she couldn't make it tonight.
That's why Allison's here, too many rights out.
So, anyway, I just, if you're interested, I'll be reviewing the red situation with that now. Heather did come to the meeting, so she's pretty well informed as to what the status is about.
Okay, so I have a number of warrants here dated between six-twenty-one and eight-thirteen, totaling one million forty-eight thousand three hundred sixty-one dollars and two cents, and payroll from six-twenty-one to eight-seven, totaling four hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty cents, total warrants and payroll, what, we didn't totally vote warrants and payrolls to do that? Anyway, those were the two amounts.
Relax there. What is that one? And the little calculator we have doesn't vote millions.
Oh, great.
Isn't that great?
Uh, we need a new calculator, Frank, it would seem to me, since our budget is six hours around.
You've got to go to the iPad, you've got to get a big one.
Or we, or we have to hold meetings every month instead of every couple of months, once we get to that point. You've got to hire, so...
One, four, nine, zero.
So the total warrants and payroll are one million four hundred ninety thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Joe, and seconded by Patty. Any comments or questions? I know there were two of you who reviewed them besides the one we took out. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. And opposed?